Okay, good evening everybody. Sorry we're a little bit late. We were having a closed session upstairs and we are done with that now. Ready to move on with our regular council meeting. So, we're called to order at 6:37. And I'd like to ask everybody to stand. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. And I would like to vote call. I'm agreeing to reflect that all council members are present and are counted for. Our next item is the approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Have a motion and a suggestion to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is presentations and announcements. And we have three items on here. James Lockwood is going to present the Ventura County Fair official poster. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. James is going to be with us tonight, so I'm staff member Chris Barwin from the city of Santa Paula. Rob Gage Jr., fellow member Alexis Galaxi-Duncan. And Andrew Short, who actually drew the second place poster.
And you're from Fillmore?
Yeah.
Well, congratulations.
You're a great artist.
Thank you. So with the poster presentation, our theme this year is rides for vans and rodeos. Our poster winner was Sam Kolles from Ventura. He's 18 and he was also second place last year in 2011. Along with the poster, we have special beats and announcements. Our first day, opening Wednesday, August 1st, is Dollar Day. Every entry is a dollar until 3:00 PM. The second day, August 2nd, Thursday, August 2nd, Monday, August 6th, Tuesday, August 7th, and Thursday, August 9th are carnival events. The fair carries food drive Thursday, August 2nd. Purchase your adult admission ticket and bring five cans of food for future before 5:00 PM and get a free return fare ticket. Return tickets are valid Monday through Thursday, August 6th and 9th. On Friday, August 3rd, we have the day all fair visitors under 12 years old are admitted free all day. The next day after that, Tuesday, August 7th, we open at 10:00 AM and have seniors and persons with disability day. Wednesday, August 8th is Free Before Free Day. Every entry before 3 o'clock is $3. And then August 9th, we have all military personnel holding up current valid military ID will be admitted free into the fair. We also have some grandstand arena entertainment. Wednesday and Thursday, August 1st and 2nd at 3:00 PM will be having armed motorsports. It's $5 admission in addition to your fair ticket. Children under 12 are admitted free with paid fair admission. Friday, August 3rd, at 7:30 PM, we have Fred Michaels, Get Your Rock On. Saturday, August 4th, we have at 7:30 PM as well Joan Jett and the Blackhearts. Sunday, August 5th, at 3:00 PM, we have Lupito Rivera Fanta Molchas, Rocco Cessado. And then on Monday, August 6th, at 7:30, we have Creed. Tuesday, August 7th, at 1:00 PM, we have Frankie Avalon and that's a matinee only. Tuesday, August 7th, at 7:30, we have Big Bad Voodoo Daddy. Wednesday, August 8th, at 7:30 PM, we have Cobra Starship With This Is She. Thursday, August 9th, at 7:30, we have Martin and the Bride. And Friday, August 10th, at 7:30, we have Boys to Men in Vogue. Saturday and Sunday, August 11th and 12th, at 2:00 and at 7:00 PM are PRCA Rodeo. And then there's free parking and shuttles. Our shuttle stops are the county government center Ventura High School, Pacific View Mall, Shuner Doctor, Hartford Boulevard, Ventura Unified School District at Stanley Avenue, and Oxnard Performing Arts Center.
Alright, well that sounds like a great lineup. I know my husband's been wanting to go see Big Bad Voodoo Daddy. Alright, well I'll come down and accept our poster.
Great job on the presentation.
No, this is going to be displayed there.
Our next agenda item is recognition for senior center volunteer Vivian Johnson. And I don't see Vivian here or in board members from the senior center, so I'd like to continue that item when Vivian's available. And so we're going to move on to item C, which is an update on downtown palm tree removal project by film commission chair Catherine Freyss. And Cindy Jackson.
Just to introduce her. This is Cindy Jackson. She is president of the Film Department Chamber of Commerce. And I asked her to come up here with me because they have helped us a great deal with this project. So, in your packet, you should already have what I drawed out, what I should say, is palm tree project and I put it into three phases so that it will be manageable. So, the first one, it's the actual removal. And we had it set for hopefully sometime between July through August. And it will take place, there's a few little fine tuning things that need to be done, but it looks as if it may be done next Friday.
Really?
Okay, so let me go ahead and outline just a little bit of it. We presented a proposal to Cindy and Ari Larson from the Chamber of Commerce. The reason being, the chamber was chosen is because they also receive funds from the permits when they come in as well. And the amounts are 200 when it's in the business district and 100 when it's out of the business district. So that's why they also have a vested interest in this. Should we obtain more billing here in Fillmore? So they were kind of an obvious choice. And they also stated they would financially assist us. And they would also take over the bidding process, meaning go through and find a landscaper or a company which would be taking down the palm trees. They have done that. They went to look to their members first. And they did find someone, but it was not one of their members, but that has been worked out, by the way. The company would have to have a $2 million liability insurance and be able to name the city of Fillmore as also insured, which our landscaper, Arnoldo Salazar, he does have. And he's hoping to receive it today, naming the city. But hopefully tomorrow it will come in. So that's, it's there, but it's not quite there for consent to.
Catherine, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is 2 million customary?
According to what I found out from Ms. Seo, is that yes it is. That is something that they requested, the city itself is 2 million, that's the amount.
Well, yeah, I'm just wondering, is 2 million or 1 million?
No, the 2 million is customary and it's appropriate for this. And hopefully nothing happens, so hopefully not.
So, okay, so that's where we are on that as well. So, the chamber set out and again sought out their members and they were requesting that it be done for 150 per tree. And as we all know, it's 26 trees. So that comes out to $3,900. But it is better than the 300 that we had originally heard. So this was perfect. They also were offering an incentive to hopefully also offset this cost as well. And that is a half-page ad in the new directory. And also no charging vendor fees at any of the events that the chamber organizes. So that's another good, those are very too big incentives for anyone to take on this challenge. Okay, and also financially, they're willing to pay for half of the company's fees, which is $1,900 in custody. And then the film commission to take responsibility of the rest. Since currently we don't have funds, we would like to do a little more fundraising. We give donations. They are willing to front the bill so that it can get done and Mr. Salazar will be paid. And then we will be paying them back as we collect our donations and with film permit fees if we don't need it. We have a couple of organizations we would like to go to and present this to and hopefully they will assist us with this as well. But it is a much smaller amount, $1,900, which is very usable, very easy. Okay, again, Arnoldo is going to be doing the, I want to say trimming of the trees, but taking down of the trees. And the permit fee, that is something else that they needed to obtain. And Chief Landero is just going to walk through with Arnoldo the permit process so that will be done hopefully within, before Friday. And also the film permit fee will be waived. So they will not have to pay the actual fee for that permit. So that's a big assistance as well. We met today, I met with Chief Landero, Public Works employee Dave Smallwood, Film Commissioner Paul Nielsen, Nielsen, excuse me, and Mr. Salazar to discuss pertinent details and to find through the whole project. Mr. Salazar informed us as to what his plan was and how he was planning to go about it. And also he will be grinding the trees down as far as his saw will allow him to. The time that he is considering starting is at 8:00 PM on Friday. And he does believe he can take them down in one night. If not, it'll be the second night, which is Saturday. So with that in mind, Chief Landero is going to put out a public announcement to inform all. And Mr. Paul Nielsen, fellow film commissioner, will be going to all the merchants individually and explaining what will be done so that they also are notified. Chief Landero and I took some pictures, but they didn't develop quite right.
Locked me out, sorry.
Huh? It locked him out? Anyway, here's the beauty, we have phase two, as you will see. Phase two was going to consist of taking down the tree chunk as best as we could and then filling up the cement. Well, that would have meant rebaring and cement, filling it all in. That was going to cost about $500 in rebaring. And Fillmore Rentals was going to donate the cement. So that was very nice. However, Mr. Smallwood, Dave Smallwood, a public employee, he said he came up with the most genius plan to just put shrubs around the area. And so we went in, we took a walk down Central and come to find out, the actual setting for each palm tree down Central is laid out with, I'm trying to lay it out because I can't, bricks and the dirt than the palm tree and there's actually shrubs around it. And as Chief Landero pointed out, the bricks are laying here and the dirt is about maybe two inches below that. So already we have a bit of a dip there, but it's being offset by all the shrubbery around palm trees. And we're talking the trunk, whatever is left of it, maybe three inches, would not be an issue. And then given that the shrubbery is currently there, we wouldn't need to fill anything. It's already taken care of, in other words. The other thing is there's a few of them that are a little bit sparse on the greenery. So we would just put some flats in there, you know, something very simple. And if it's a boys scout or a girls scout project that wants to be done to do that, that's more than welcome as well. But it's a very simple process now, thanks to Mr. Smallwood. I deeply regret to him for that. Okay, so pretty much that is all we have for now as to far as an update, but they will be coming down. And Paul Nielsen, my fellow film commissioner, he has an Excel spreadsheet with all the contacts from the expo. There are two that are interested in filming and that would be coming up this fall. One is some haunted movie or something, I don't know. And the other one, I'm not quite sure. But he will be contacting them as soon as the trees spread out. So that's my update for you at this point. And hopefully they will be coming down next Friday. Any questions, Ryan?
We do. You mentioned the divvy notification of the businesses. We also have residents on Central Avenue.
Yes, the apartments as well.
Right, on the east and west side and the senior apartments.
The ones right over here across from here, which is picking up. And also the ones above Ballard's Furniture.
Ballard's Furniture across the street and above AM Pet. So we can make sure that all those residents are contactless.
Yes, because at 8:00 PM, I'm sure they can put some people out.
Also, I'd like to mention that there won't be any additional cost for maintenance of the shrubbery because it's already, it's already within the landscape contract that we already have downtown, so it's not going to add to it. It's just, we may not have to add extra shrubbery, but the ones that we do is very minimal, so there should be no cost to maintain it.
Do you have any questions, Ryan?
Well, I just, I still, I know you're going to slap me on the face. I wanted to thank you specifically. You've done a lot of work, more than anybody would recognize. I know you have, your career is very busy. So, but I, it's been a great pleasure working with you, Cindy. You've done a lot for us, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
But this is, it's called progress when the community steps up. This is a great example. My goal still is 2002. We're going to get up to 80,000 plus.
20,000.
Maybe 13,000.
Well, no, going back to what, 2002?
Oh, the goal is 2000.
Oh, yeah.
The rate, I see.
Yes, going back to the permits.
70,000.
70,000.
Yes.
Big love.
Yes, so hopefully more will, you know, that was one of the things holding back. And they hurried him to the expo as well. This is same deal, as soon as they heard we're going to take them, when? That was the first question, when? We can't do it too soon.
And it also should be pointed out that Ms. Freyss, as well as new commissioner Kerry Brody, have been working on a Facebook page, trying to keep the community and hopefully prospectors of Fillmore. So it's, you know, this is a volunteer position and you guys done the diligence.
Thank you very much. One last thing I should say too is I need, I do, I could not have done this on my own, trust me. I'd like to thank also Cindy and Ari Larson. They were the ones who met with us and were very, very helpful and so proactive. I can't use these lines, like, okay, can we get this done now? Can we get it as fast as we could possibly do it? So I thank them. And the city of Fillmore, Deputy City Clerk Laura Seo, she's been a wonderful person, have helped me a lot with my phone calls when I had a question or for anything pertinent to this project. City Manager Yvonne Query, thank you so very much as well for helping us with the permit fees and all the information about the insurance. I really appreciate it. Chief Rico Landero, thank you so much, constantly calling him. Anyway, and City Public Works, Dave Smallwood. They have been from his idea, we still be trying to put cement down. Film Commissioner Paul Nielsen, who's not here. And lastly, Brian Sykes, Councilman. Brian really helped me with this as well. I mean, he was there when I said, Lynn, I need you here at this meeting. He showed up. So I really appreciate your assistance as well.
Catherine, did you have any questions? Oh, sorry.
Well, I didn't have a question per se. I was going to suggest is take a lot of good pictures.
We have.
Through the process.
We made the four shots.
All through the process and send it to those filmmakers. Tell them, hey, this is what we have been doing. And through the process of cutting the trees and everything. Because they will, I believe, they will take that as a, hey, this city is really...
We're ready.
Exactly. And we're doing what you guys have requested. Look at the process we have done, before, after, during. Do all these things and make a nice, it would be nice to have it on our website so they can go straight to our website and look at what we have done. Just as a suggestion I have for that. I think that works very well.
Right, thank you. Also, we have Pat, who's working on putting together something where we can show the houses that are available. We're going to reach out to the community and ask, would you like your house to be filmed? At any time, and show us some, you know, footage of your house. If we can put that out as well, that's another thing we're trying to do.
I'll still be glad to take phone calls and show.
Show like that would be dangerous. Yeah, that was a crazy day, graduation day, it was a crazy day.
Catherine, I did have a couple of comments. First, Cindy, the coming up with the creative ideas for the funding, that was really, really creative and I appreciate you doing that. But Vision 2020, have you guys talked to the Vision 2020?
Oh, we have not, no. They're notifying.
Yeah, they're involved in a, they do all the pots on Central Avenue and they're very involved in the landscaping of the trees and stuff. So you might want to contact, some of them, and Dave Smallwood might have their contact information.
He did mention that on our walkthrough today. Because again, we only have a few, maybe cover, I mean, maybe only two or three of those set palm trees that can have shrubbery.
They might have some good feeds actually. And Mr. Salazar, we use him, he's very good.
He's very competent.
Yeah, and very affordable too.
He's doing this part of the kindness of his heart for the city as well. 150, that's...
Yeah, I'd love to mention that, that's the excellent price.
Ms. Freyss.
Ms. Freyss, it was also to mention there were some handful of farmers that came before the film commission, specifically with Ms. Jackson and Ms. Freyss, that voluntarily wanted to help get the trees.
Right.
In the city, and all voluntary, no set benefits allowed to control that.
And they actually still might be of use there. We may be taking the palm trees, once they're down, all that's left, to their land. And they will be burned. Burn, maybe we're burning? They offer that. So we're still, that's part of what we're still kind of working on. Getting, making sure the insurance gets to Ms. Freyss so we can get that done and it's in her hands. But again, he's already contacted the insurance. We're just matter of the insurance getting to him and doing it over his.
Thank you for lots of hard work. And I just wanted to tell the public, we have wonderful volunteers and wonderful people who love Fillmore. This is a sign of, I appreciate it.
So, rocks are all the presentations. Are there any other presentations and announcements from council members? Go ahead.
I have some brochures for a luncheon that will be taking place at Ice Manger Lining this Friday, July 13th, from 11:30 to 12:30. Cost is $5 for non-members. And it's free to Fillmore and Santa Paula Chambers. And the featured speaker will be Attorney Les Lee McAdam from Ferguson, case four, Patterson. Great speaker. So I would recommend the community come out and go for a cheap lunch. That's a great deal. So make copies for fellow council members. And if city staff would like to put a couple out for the public, please do so.
Any other comments or presentations or announcements?
Yes, I have one. I'm sure I have two. We've been working with this sport group. And they have done a lot of good work in the last few weeks. They have put in the basis of organizing all the sports under one association. And, you know, we continue to have it, haven't made it in next week, the 18th. We invited everybody to come in, they want to be part of that. All the sports, everything that is organized, we're trying to have this association done. And they are ready to go. I mean, they're really excited to see them, ready to go. And, but we need every single sport. Now we have football, Little Leagues, softball, and soccer. Those are the big ones that we have. And we want to invite everybody, walkers, everybody, to come in and be part of this association because we have a lot left planned for that. And also I wanted to report on the swimming pool. I want to have some numbers. And unfortunately, I don't have the last numbers. But the swimming pool has been busy the last couple of weeks since they opened. Especially since the hot, the heat came in. And the 4th of July, I understand, was really, really busy. And we have programs, we have one program that canceled because we have only one individual interested in that. But we have 23 and another program that opened. So it is just fantastic. And the exercise group, we have two hours for exercise group and they are just full. They can't handle anymore. And apparently there's a good instructor that's doing the job over there. So come enjoy the swimming pool, there's some good things happening there.
Thank you, that's good news. Any other council presentations or announcements? I think the chief, both chiefs have an announcement to make. They have a presentation on fireworks activities.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. As your chief, I'd like to report on our 4th of July fireworks enforcement and the obstacles we faced along with the fire department during the holiday. This is my second 4th of July here. Being it was on a Wednesday, we're over a week. Still very, very busy, not as busy as last year. And in saying that, we put out nine extra cars for that enforcement period. Several of the cars that we put out were plain cars so we could do a little bit better maneuvering to get to the illegal fireworks because that's obviously was our focus. The fine is very steep, it's $1,100. However, what we found, Chief Rico and I found that what was disturbing and it was that some adults were allowing their small children to fire off the illegal fireworks, which is an extreme hazard. And fortunately for both the chief and I, our reports, we didn't indicate, there was no reported injuries that night. However, the potential was enormous. So, and those, especially the illegal fireworks that we saw being shot off with adults giving them to children, the adults took responsibility, fortunately, so they did get the ticket. But, you know, just we kind of blew me away that that would be happening. Obviously, a lot of the safe and sane fireworks were out and about. And in saying that too, people put them out and rolled the street. Real hard to maneuver at any late, any speed. So obviously that's an issue too. But what we also found with the illegal fireworks, not only were people calling in a dispatch to get us to certain locations, but chief and I and Ari W., we could see it. It's a matter of getting there. And then when you get there, the police, you know, we have to see it. And it's very difficult. And a lot of these are shot off in private backyards, so it's very difficult to get to. But all in all, we ended up writing 13 tickets for illegal fireworks on the 4th. And in coordination with fire. And also the calls for service, the 4th of July calls for service for any police department is usually the highest of the year. It's a very busy holiday. And since that we have to respond to domestic violence, we've got a lot of those fights in progress. Towards the end of the night, we had two large parties over in North Fillmore, 50 to 60 people fighting or at least alleged fighting. So, you know, it's a busy night and people are having fun. But all in all, as far as the ticket enforcement, we were able to write 13. And like I said, I tried to put out as many cars as I could, not only with our fireworks enforcement money, but also I tapped into some grant money too because I felt the need, especially in Fillmore, to have that extra enforcement out.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Any questions for the chief?
13 tickets, and I emailed to you, you said it's about average compared to the past couple of years.
Yeah, well, and this is my second year and I have some stats from 2010. There's 15 tickets, 2011, 12, and this year 13. So we're in the same ballpark, this one, I'm joking.
I was just thinking that, would it be better, like increase like $2,500?
I don't know. And how we collect too, it's, I don't think we have 100% collection as we have now, fully amount. amount. You want to comment on that?
Well, I don't think the amount is going to deter it. It's more of the parents taking responsibility for their children's actions. I compare it to, it's a bad comparison, but I can compare it anyway, I compare it to drunk driving. Everybody knows the stiff penalty for drunk driving, everybody knows what kind of damage it does, not only to your own family, but to others' families, whether it be death or, or serious injury to yourself or to others. But what we have, we have a lot of people getting arrested for, for drunk driving. So I don't think, and that's, I think by the time someone finishes with the drunk driving, it's like $15,000 or $20,000 or so. In my personal opinion, I don't feel that the amount is going to really drop the amount of illegal fireworks. I think it's making sure that the parents understand the severity of one, the dangers of to your children and to yourselves. But more importantly, if there's anything that's going to stop legal fireworks in Fillmore is the events that happened the other night. It's the grossly abuse of illegal fireworks. And as Monica and Yvonne was with me that night, you could, we could have had 40 police officers on duty and still not have gotten half of what was out there. You gotta first of all, catch them in the act of lighting it. Because literally, we'd drive down the street, we would say, who, who lit that? I didn't do it, I didn't do it, I didn't do it, I didn't do it. So you gotta physically catch them lighting it or physically have that item, that illegal item in their hands. So it's a good suggestion and it's something that we probably should think about. If it was up to me, I'd do $10,000 a fine, but is that really going to be effective? And that's, I think, one thing that we really need to research.
Are there any review of Anderson that lives, 13 this year?
As far as I know, no. I think $1,000 fine or $1,100 fine is a, I think it's a pretty hefty slap in the face whenever you get caught.
How many were local and how many were out of towners?
Roughly, only about 20 to 30% were local, the rest of them were out of town. And that was usually the first thing I said, where are you from? San Antonio, San Paula, Ventura. So, and the other thing is education too. I, you know, once again, this is my second 4th of July and to see the amount of illegal fireworks, at first I thought the show was starting and Rico said, no. Not the show. But it's, it's, it's all of us as a community have to, we have to peer pressure, we have to tell our neighbors and, and those that are buying these things, you can't have it. It's just, it's just not good for a lot of reasons. And then we're running around town trying to catch somebody in the act of carrying them, it's very difficult. And then, and thank God, we didn't get any serious injuries, there's no hands blown off, arms, et cetera. But then to couple that, we have all the emergency calls we have to go to. So it's, it's, once again, it's, everybody's gotta pull together and not tolerate it.
Could I ask, we had a lot of fireworks on our block, it was actually kind of fun. But how do you tell the difference between legal and illegal fireworks? I don't think I would know.
Yeah, safe and sane fireworks are, they just skew.
Fountain type.
Exactly. The illegal ones either explode or they projectile up into the air. And that's what makes them so dangerous is the explosion. If someone has something called like a M80 or a half a stick of dynamite, which they do sell over there, or they do light up, I should say, they could blow up in their hands and people lose fingers and limbs and things of that sort. The ones that projectile up in the air, those are the biggest problems as far as fires are concerned because they, those are the ones that start this brush fires, the bush fires, the actual structure fires, fires on top of roofs. So again, I can't emphasize enough for TV land to remember, we aren't the bad guys, we're trying to prevent bad things from happening. And I know those that got citations were very upset at us, but the truth of the matter is, is that we're trying to save themselves and the people around them. You know, we didn't ask them to use the illegal fireworks, we're trying to enforce it so everybody stays safe and we continue on with the safe and sane because there's going to come a time when we may have to think about putting a stop to it if this kind of action continues because there's, it's very, very, getting more and more difficult to, to control. It's going to be a shame.
Where do the illegal fireworks come from?
Well, they come, actually, the state of Nevada. There's actually a lot of states, believe it or not. My sister lives in Fort Wayne, Indiana, and they have grocery stores, like two or three months before the 4th of July where you can actually go in with a shopping cart and purchase illegal fireworks, or what we consider illegal, but they aren't illegal there. But, I mean, there's states out there that Nevada, the state line Mexico, they go over the border, my sister in Fort Wayne, Indiana, you know, they can, you know, it's just like going to a grocery store. It's pretty amazing.
So they can't buy them in California, they have to be imported?
That is correct. California only allows safe and sane, has to have that state seal. And that's what's kind of frustrating when they put these statistics out about illegal fireworks and how many injuries, while they take the whole United States numbers and put it together, while they also include the injuries that are, that happen in the states of like Nevada where they allow safe and sains and people are blowing their hands off or in their fingers off. That part of that number is, is smashed into that, that specific injury total, which is kind of a skewed total. But nevertheless, I can't emphasize enough that you have to, if you're going to be doing safe and sane, you gotta do it safely and supervise your children if they're going to be lighting those off. And then also, we have to be, like Chief McGrath had mentioned, is that we need to make sure that we're diligent about making sure that our families and the people we have over at our homes for parties are responsible and don't do illegal fireworks.
Since 80% are coming outside from the city, out of the city, would it be better to have some signs at the entrance of the city saying, hey, we catch you with this? And I know, I know that Morepark, driving on the 23, Morepark had these big signs, catch you, this is going to be fine. Perhaps it would be nice to, to have at the entrance, maybe three?
Right. We did, we did, not only the local media release, we did Starkey Press had a huge write-up on the safe and sane and the illegals and the fines for illegals. We had a total, I think, 12 big banners that we put up. I don't know if you saw them at Two Rivers Park, Shields Park, Door State Park. We really, we really put the word out that it was illegal and the fact that you would get a $1,100 fine if, if you get caught with possession or discharging of illegal fireworks.
What percentage of these tickets is actually collected from last year? Do we have that number?
I, you know what, we can get that number for you. We'll send it out to the, to the, to the whole council.
Oh, it'd be nice to get, thank you.
Well, that's a good idea that you had though. It was well advertised, but maybe we should put those electric signs up.
Sure.
Especially on the 4th or maybe even a few days before.
And the other thing I want to mention too, is to your question earlier, is that we did not have any serious injuries related to safe and sane fireworks or illegal fireworks for that matter, still not right to do the illegal fireworks. And the only fire that we responded to was a dumpster fire on C Street next to the Catholic Church. And that could have been because of the fact they were throwing their used fireworks into the dumpster and they made sure they weren't out yet. So, but other than that, it was, as far as fire, we went to, I think, four medical calls, not related to injuries from fireworks, but it was a busy night, but not in fires that did this.
But there's a lot of unsafe and insane fireworks out there. You know, I saw guys, gentlemen, shooting roman candles into pine trees and people doing, in the middle of the road, the gigantic ones, that falling on pine trees. And last year, wasn't there a tree caught a fire in Fillmore?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, we're trying to tell folks, please, I mean, this could turn bad.
Just be responsible.
Thanks for your hour.
Thank you for the record, I appreciate it. All right. That's the end of our presentations and announcements. We're going to move on to public comments. I do have some speaker cards. This is the time for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. So if you want to comment on an item that's not on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card. And I want to remind people to be respectful and just be a good citizen and don't, you know, don't smear people or slander people. And I want to tell the Gazette, don't interrupt speakers. Everybody gets an opportunity to say what they need to say. That's why we're here, to listen and hear everybody's issues, complaints, kudos, whatever. But we don't interrupt speakers. I'm talking to you. Okay. Interrupt and you'll be ejected. So, Alex Mulcoyne, I was looking for a card for you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I actually have a few, few different topics to speak on tonight. The first one is just to follow up with fireworks. Ms. Monica McGrath, she's chief of Sheriff's Department, has stated that it was not very safe to be lighting them in the middle of the street. In my neighborhood, the, I live right next to the old middle school, which is now the high school annex or Sierra, or whatever they call it, the continuation school. And I found that the school district was very irresponsible and unwieldy with their compassion for the fact that we sell legal fireworks. Approximately 8 o'clock, the sprinklers went off in the ball field and they never go off at that time. So this was like, basically devised to keep everybody out of the park. So we had no choice but to light our fireworks in the street, making it difficult for cars to drive. Okay? That's all. I just wanted to say that, you know, here we are, you know, we allow the sale of fireworks for all the nonprofit and everything and that we allow the school district to, to combat the, the effects of, of the progress of the fundraiser. But anyways, so that's all I have to say on that.
Alex, could I encourage you to maybe go speak to the school board about that? I don't think we have any control over there.
You know, I've had many conversations with Supervisor Sweeney and it never got me anywhere.
I think there's an issue.
And, and there was a major project on my street that involved the school district and the city. And I was in response to the city and the school district and I felt like I was a ping pong ball or a tennis ball going back and forth and back and forth and back and forth over the building that they built across the street from my house, the 12 palm, pine trees that they tore down from our street and never replaced. And I find that to be foul against the environment. And there was never any consideration for anyone on my street on that city school project. I got tossed from the city to the school, back from the school to the city, back to the school, back to the city until I just gave up.
Was there, did you have other comments you wanted to make?
Yes, I, I do. I want to read from the Ventura County Star, Tuesday, June 26, 2012 edition. Front page, Fillmore feels pinch. City likely to slash services to fix budget. When the phone rings at Fillmore City Hall, there's a decent chance it's one member of the city council recently called a chicken call. Complaints about a neighbor's chickens, a crowing rooster, a smelly mess, whether chickens are allowed in the neighborhood at all. All among the most common calls to the city, when the city gets one, someone typically checks to see whether the house in question is allowed to have chickens. Officially, officials might send a warning letter to visit the property if there appears to be a zoning violation. Starting July 1st, the city probably won't do anything at all. Fillmore's budget for the new fiscal year, which the council likely will approve today, cuts funds for code enforcement from $71,000 this year to almost zero. With just $6,000 to spend on enforcing building and zoning costs, the city will investigate only problems that threaten the health or safety of residents. An apartment with plumbing that doesn't work or electricity that improperly wired will get a visit from the city. Routine matters like a crowing rooster and an addition that takes a house too close to the property line won't make the cut. Fillmore is at a stage in which it must consider how much it can cut and still deliver the minimum level of service residents expect. The city's workforce already has dropped from 42 full-time people to 30 in the past year and the new budget would reduce that to 22 in the coming year. Last year, the entire staff took 18.5% pay cuts. I don't know where else we can go, but what else we can keep cutting, Fillmore Mayor Gail Washburn said. This is not sustainable. We have to get some way to get some sustainable revenue we can depend on. Fillmore's troubles have led some observers to question whether the city can survive. Kathy Long, the county supervisor, whose district includes Fillmore and Santa Paula, said the idea of Fillmore might dissolve and turn its government over to the county is not unthinkable. As I look at the city budget and talk to the city manager, I think they basically have a year to turn this around, Long said. Dissolution. City Manager Yvonne Quering said no one in Fillmore.
Alex, Alex, excuse me. Do you have a point? Could we get to the?
The point is, I want the public to hear this.
Well, they have access to the newspaper. We, there are other speakers, so.
Okay, okay. I do have another point.
Okay.
I would like to know what is happening with case number 56-200900355239CUBCVTA. Dylan Snow versus City of Fillmore. Per the public records, it states that there was a complaint filed by Dylan Snow on 8/11/2009 and refers to the City of Fillmore as defendant. The second matter is the civil case cover sheet filed by Snow-Dylan on 8/11/2009. Declaration for Court Assignment filed by Snow-Dylan on 8/11/2009. Case assigned to Department 41. OSC, I'm not sure what that stands for, for sanctions dismissal for failure to file proof of service publication, file proof on complainance, defendant fought City of Fillmore, scheduled for 11/2009.
Alex, what's the question?
The question is, notice of partial settlement, conditional. Completion date, June 30th, 2013, filed by Snow-Dylan, 10/2009. So are we in a partial settlement with Dylan Snow?
I don't think we can discuss a legal matter publicly.
So are you saying that we're still on litigation with Dylan Snow?
There is no ongoing litigation with Dylan Snow.
So there's no litigation, there's no lawsuit?
I think there's something ongoing, but I, I can't discuss it, so. Next question.
Okay. Well, my question is, is Jamie Brooks' last meeting stated that he did not want any further charges to the city attorney based on the Equestrian Center, Dylan Snow. But yet Dylan Snow has not even been able to keep his sublettee at the Equestrian Center on the behalf of the city and they have moved off property. So, I mean, this is, I mean, are we in litigation or are we not in litigation? What's, can we get some, some real truth on? on the matter of the Equestrian Center, Dylan Snow? Or are we just gonna shove it under the rug?
All right.
That's my question. Are we gonna shove it under the rug?
Right now, but I will say that during the budget discussions, it is on our list to be discussed. It's not high on the list, but it's there. So I don't know how long it will take before we get to it.
So, so you're saying his contract with the city is valid?
I'm not saying that. Okay, next question. Did you have any other questions?
Why is this just like such gray matter?
Because it's a legal issue, and we're not gonna publicly discuss legal issues. We're not allowed.
Because you're afraid of being bullied?
Would you like to address that, city attorney?
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, he said that he would not be bullied by the attorneys from the Royal Hall Park.
All right.
What's going on with the Equestrian Center? This has been years.
All right, you're out of the line.
Okay, city attorney, can you answer?
The matter is not on the agenda, so we're not gonna talk about it.
Oh, good. Thank you, all the citizens of Fillmore. Again, no answers, all this, whatever.
All right.
All right.
I do have other speakers who wish to speak. My next speaker is Anna Futo Sanchez. This is to present info on safety.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, City Manager, and residents. My name is Anna Futo Sanchez. I'm the Public Affairs Regional Manager with us. And there's a couple of things that I want to share with you. One of them is the Energy Center. We have two of them, one in my city and one in Irwindale. It's a little booklet that was placed before you that has a lot of good classes. Previously, it used to be called our Customer Technology Application Center. It was right off of Irwindale Avenue in Irwindale. And it has a lot of great classes for businesses. They're free of cost. And these little booklets are provided on a quarterly basis. I'll be bringing them to you, and I'll be giving some out in the front, you know, just for anyone that is interested in attending some of those classes. And the other piece of information that I wanted to share with you, we are really stressing, I think previously when I spoke with you at a different council meeting, I stressed that safety around electricity has been very important to all of us. And there's a little booklet that speaks to what residents can do when they see a downed power line. Of course, you know, we ask that they stay away, that they call 911. It also, this little booklet also gives information on overhead power lines and, you know, like tremors, tree tremors, and, you know, how to avoid getting electrocuted. And it has a lot of other good information. Safety, you know, when you use power cords, water and electricity don't leak, as we know. Know what to do in case of electrical fires, water heaters, portable generators, ground fault circuit interrupters, electric meters and equipment. And this little brochure is produced in seven different languages, you know, which are behind the booklet. So I'm gonna leave some of these behind also, and then little magnets, you know, that say danger, call 911. I just wanted to share that with you. That's interesting.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate that. It's Spanish and English.
Yes.
Okay. My next speaker card is Mr. Gary Creel.
Come on, let's get it rolling, guys. You really wanted that guy, Steve? My name is Gary Creel. I'm a mayor, council, staff. Nice to be here tonight. Wonderful, beautiful day today. Tonight, I want to talk to you about the city attorney that we've had, the law firm that we've had for, I don't know, 15, 20 years. And, you know, when I came up to the sheriff's office, I met a lot of attorneys, trial attorneys, civil attorneys, you name it. Some were good, some were bad. I think most were good. But I learned one thing about attorneys. And I learned one thing about the professions in general. When you have a difficult chore or project to do, you can call in an engineer, and he will develop a process on how to solve your problem. He will walk you through the process and solve your problem. Now, when you hire attorneys, most of the time, you already have a problem. That's most of the time. Not all the time, but most of the time. Most attorneys will tell you why you shouldn't do something, while engineers tell you how to do something and how to go about solving your problem. We have not had that kind of legal counsel for the last, I would say, since 92. Now, I can speak with some authority because you all know I was on the council back in the 80s. And we had old Joe Kern. Whether you like Joe or not, Joe's a, Joe was a great city attorney. Joe was good because he kept us out of trouble, but, but he was for the people of the City of Fillmore all the time. 100%. He cared about the City of Fillmore and the people of the City of Fillmore. I think that job or that occupation today may not be the same as back in Joe's days. I don't know. You would know, I would not. But I think we've been involved. I, I did a little study on our litigious history with the City of Fillmore. And since 1992, we've had tenfold in lawsuits in legal claims, civil, criminal, whatever. That may have something to do with the administration, I don't know. That may have something to do with the people that used to sit in those chairs before you, I don't know. And it could be a combination of both. I do know some things for sure. In 2004, I found out that there was an outfit called MTS in the Gorilla Building. I believe it's room 106. And I was suspicious about that. And I started checking into it. So I Googled MTS. And my wife Karen, who was around at that time, said, Gary, come in here, look at this thing. Skokie, Illinois. Lots of gigantic problems. So I went to Martin Farrell. I said, maybe, that's when me and Martin were talking nicely. And I said, Martin, you gotta check this out. So, I don't know what's going on with everybody. It's some kind of tax scheme. And he said, well, you know, I'll look into it. I don't know if he looked into it or not, I don't know. He never did a story, right? So, I don't know. Maybe he was talking to somebody on the council, like Steve, who was on there at that time, and maybe he was, was satisfied. I just know we're in deep, deep trouble because our city council, our legal council, could have used due diligence at the time and Googled MTS. It would have taken 15 seconds. The sewer plant is all a pain in our posterior. No plan intended. The prices go up, and the prices go up, and the prices go up. We all know that. Our legal council at the time could have looked at the deal, the land purchase. You know that we have never had, the public has never been informed as to how that deal went down. Perry Ranch Company, who was Shorty Crockett, I don't know if any of you remember Shorty, Steve probably remember Shorty Crockett. Maybe Ryan. He was Perry Ranch company. He was in that little house on the highway there across from Pascador or Los Ritos. He wanted to sell. There was no money in mortgages, and so he wanted to sell. And, you know, I was thinking about, that's a couple of years ago. He wanted to sell. Why didn't the city, now, maybe they could, and maybe they couldn't, I don't know, but why, if they knew they were gonna build a sewer plant, why didn't the city buy the land? For, for $19,000 an acre? Instead of paying 10 times that later for a sewer plant? Just, just a thought. That's what, that's what legal councils, city attorneys do. They find ways to keep you out of trouble. A good attorney, you cannot argue. He, if his mind is set, he will probably win the argument, even against the strongest city manager or mayor that there is. But he's doing it for a good reason. He's keeping the city and its people and the council, the corporation, out of trouble. The loan on the plant, we all know we could have gotten state funds. I think that was the job of the city attorney to look into that. We could have gotten state funds for 2% instead of whatever we're paying for 5%, I don't know what we're paying. I know we're going broke over it. It doesn't take a rocket science to figure that out. The last couple of things, you know, get out of your hair. Something's changed, and I really don't like it, and I don't think the majority of you like it up there either. You have a city corporation, and it seems like it's an entity all into itself. It seems like it's, the people out there think it's not responsive to them. You're protecting yourselves, but you were voted, you were put in here by the people. You were put in here because they trust you. So the heck with protecting the corporation? I know, that's his job. But you work for the people. And that's a big concern of everybody out there. Just maybe he would have told a city mayor that he couldn't conduct an investigation on an department head. Now, maybe you can do that today, I don't know. I don't know if a city mayor can conduct an investigation on a fire chief and then have him fired. I thought that was a city manager's job. But I'm not too worried about that because Pete Nagety is gonna take care of that. Thank you for your time.
All right. Are there any other members of the public who would wish to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, if we have no speakers, no more speakers, we're gonna move on to the consent, oh, I have a request for a short recess. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting back to order. Thanks for your patience, we'll need to quit break. Now, we're gonna move on to the consent item, consent calendar. We have three items on their warrant list. I am requesting to pull items B and C. If that's okay with the council?
Certainly.
All right, thank you. All in favor of doing it? So we're gonna move on to the warrant list, which is item A. We have a motion for the- I have a motion. Second, this is a voice vote, Councilman Conway.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Item B is direct staff to provide responses to the grand jury for the graffiti report and mandatory detention facility inspections report, and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city council. City manager, did you have any comments on-
Just steam. Does right here just steam?
I know. I think that was a typo.
I find somebody can steam.
The reason I wanted to pull this was for two reasons. One, I got a call from the grand jury this morning, and they would like me to come over and give a report to the grand jury. There's a lot of new members, and they don't know anything about Fillmore, so I'll be going over on the 20th to make a presentation to them. So I wanted to let you know that. And then also on the graffiti report, I think I had a question on that. One of the, oh, I want to share this with the chief police. I got this, oh, did they wait?
I was, something came up, and so, but we'll make sure we get that information to her.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Sorry, I didn't even see them leave.
This is Billy, I'm sure you all met Billy before. And he's filling in for Rego Rego, with one.
Okay, well, what I wanted to share with them, and I'll give it to the city manager, that this company, Q-Star, sent a flyer, and they have a flash, a flash cam that's supposed to help deter graffiti. So maybe that's something that the chief could look into or city manager could look into. One of the recommendations by the grand jury was that the city petitioned the sentencing court for delay or suspension of driving privileges for those convinced, convicted of graffiti negligence. And we concurred with that. One of, the only item that we didn't concur with was petition the court for that same sentencing to delay or suspend driving privileges. But the city is gonna respond that the state vehicle code will prevail, and that it's already, it's already part of the state vehicle code. So I was gonna ask the chief of reinforcing that.
Yes, I talked to Monica, that's how we got in the report. And so she, what is written is what she told me.
Okay, that's good.
So they're gonna ask the detective what happened since they just came up to cite under that section.
Okay, I appreciate that. You know, graffiti is an issue around here. And with our reduced staff of facilities people to take care of that, we have to find a way to stay on top of it. Get rid of the graffiti. So that was all. Were there any other questions or comments on the grand jury report from the council? Okay. The next item was authorize staff to submit an application and related paperwork, if appropriate, for replacement charging stations. These are electric vehicle charging stations, and the state is funding these throughout the state of California, and we have an opportunity to have two of them installed at no cost. And I think we're still trying to find out if, if we have to pay for the electricity for them.
Well, there's actually a lot of details to find out. I have placed calls, but have not received calls.
Okay.
So I have to follow up and find out what's going on.
Okay, and they will go, most likely, in the location where the original charging stations we had over here in the city parking lot. But I had several communications from citizens who are now driving and switching to electric vehicles, and want, are looking for that. So I think it's important that the city support this. So I think it's important that the city support this.
Would that be with the campaign that we don't pay for the electricity?
Well, that's, that's.
Unfortunately, if that isn't included, if the city doesn't pay, you have to pay, it's not free anymore. You have to pay, there's a little module that gets installed to have the, uh, the person paid for.
Via credit card or something?
I don't know, that's what I need to find out.
Okay, so there's.
But it's, I think, the only one that's installed for free, and again, I'm trying to confirm all of this, is just the free, free version. If the city wants to install something that has the person paid for, that's an additional charge.
Now, I was told by one conversation I had with an individual from the Sierra Club that there is a grant that cities can apply for to, um, take care of these, these costs that are most likely the cities have to take, to shed, to update the, um, facilities.
Right, and that's the, the grant we're talking about. But having people actually pay for the power, the char, that they're, when they're charging their car, someone has to pay for that, either it's the city or the vehicle owner.
And I was, I was under the assumption from the information that I gathered that this grant included all of that. It was an inclusive grant that allowed that, so cities were not having to front the bill.
Was that separate from this? I think that there's, that they will install, and this is again what I'm trying to confirm, they will install the charging station, but there, it's like a basic vanilla charging station and if you want to have the ability to have someone else pay for it, like the owner of the vehicle, that may be an additional charge. It may end up costing the city something to have that component attached.
So is there a time sensitivity to this grant?
August first.
Okay. So if we get a grant and we put in this electrical charging station, someone could just pull up and charge a car and we pay for it?
Right.
I don't like that.
Yeah, I don't like that either.
I can't afford that, you know, nice idea.
Well, we don't even know what the cost is.
Well, if, if you.
I don't care if it's three dollars.
If, what you could do is just authorize me to, if it turns out we're going to have to pay to, we're going to end up paying for the electricity, you can give me some parameters to work out and I, to work through, then I'll report back.
So put this authorized, just submit an application and related paperwork if appropriate. The appropriate would be whether or not, uh, we're stuck with the vehicle.
Well, what she's saying is, is we are stuck with it unless we, uh, put that attachment, that credit card attachment on.
But that might cost us.
Right, it may end up costing us.
So if it costs us more, then it's not appropriate. Is what I'm throwing out to the, without his ear.
I think, I think the motion, Jamie, that you said was to move forward with grant application and proceed if there is absolutely zero net cost to the city for the installation and the use of the charger.
Exactly.
Okay, so I will second that. It's kind of hard to make considerations and we don't have all these facts and understand what you said we're trying to get on, but, it, it seems kind of silly to be talking about all the what ifs, we don't know what the what ifs are at all. But with those parameters, zero net cost to the city, I'll support it.
Is that second, or the, so we have, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion, second, Davis, say aye.
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 I make a motion to receive a file of interim report on item seven.
I have a motion, sorry, second, I have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, thank you. Okay. Item eight, committee, commission and board reports.
I am to attend a transportation commission on Friday. We will be covering a eleven month contract to keep, uh, this bus running. You've probably read it out in the newspaper. And, uh, so that, that's Friday morning and, uh, they were able to negotiate, uh, with, uh, the bank company to keep, keep them on and running through July, which is great. So this is in the process of after the eleven months, uh, the transportation commission will be looking at the long term issues.
Okay, great. Any other reports?
Just, just for public knowledge, on July thirteenth, Thursday, I'll be attending the Ventura County Animal Services Commission meeting. The agenda has not been published as of yet. Um, July eighteenth, next week, next Wednesday, I'll be attending the JPIA Annual Board Meeting down in La Palma.
Thank you. Any other reports? Okay, we're going to move on to item nine A. This is consideration and possible approval of resolution number three three four three. Resolution supporting SB eight forty-three, Community-Based Renewable Energy Self-Generation Act, a bill related to local renewable energy production. And this was a request from, uh, City of Davis, Davis mayor. This eight forty-three is legislation that will allow cities to create their own, uh, to create their own, to reduce carbon emissions. Uh, allow citizens to invest in a city organized community, renewable garden, receive a direct credit on their bill. I think they meant to say solar farm. Um, it will allow all Californians to increase their direct actions and empower private funds for climate action. I, basically, my understanding of it is that if the city chose to build a solar farm and those individuals who are not, who are living in an apartment or live, uh, under shaded trees and don't have the opportunity to put solar on their home, they could buy into a cooperative. And, um, as you know, one of my fantasies is having a solar, solar farm out on the PCPL site. Used to pull creek on the old Chevron, uh, Texaco site, EPA site, which has already been designated by the EPA and NRL as a capable of producing one megawatt of solar electricity. So with that, it's, it's just a fairly simple resolution. I, I do have a speaker card, but are there any questions from the council before I call our speaker out? Okay, I'm going to call up Ms. Futo Sanchez, she has some comments on this.
Good evening again, Ana Futo Sanchez with Southern California Edison. And regarding the Senate bill, you know, I'm here, uh, to note that Edison is not in favor of this bill at this time, unless there's some amendments, and I want to read to you the reasons why Edison is in opposition. SCE opposes SB eight forty-eight, Senator Watts' bill to establish a statewide community-based renewable self-generation program. In addition to SCE believing that the premise of SB eight forty-three conflicts with the pricing rules laid out in federal law, or also known as the Public Utilities Regulatory, or the Regulatory Policy Act of nineteen seventy-eight, California cannot regulate the wholesale sales, the wholesale sales of power because this form of regulation falls exclusively within the purview of the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. In addition, SCE opposes Senate Bill eight forty-three for the following reasons. One, SB eight forty-three would undermine existing regulatory safeguards by permitting unregulated entities to participate in the market at an unfair advantage over the state-regulated IOUs or investor utilities. Two, SB eight forty-three could potentially shift cost from program participants to non-participating utility customers. Three, the billing arrangement structure under SB eight forty-three is complex and would be difficult to administer. And finally, four, there are several feed-in tariff programs, RAMA auctions, community choice aggregation programs, ESCs or energy service providers, and other meaningful programs that can be utilized without establishing a new program that holds significant negative implications for the retail electricity market and stakeholders and for existing customers. So I would like this to go on record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Sanchez?
Thank you for, for patience.
Yeah, and, and I would like to say, I, I'm glad you clarified the language that you're currently opposed to it and I will say that I spoke with Mayor Cravoso today and he said that they're working with, uh, power companies to redo the language to make it more adaptable to what you're looking for. So, um, I think it's going to eventually be worked out, so.
Like, you know, I mentioned before, there's anything that we can do as a utility, you know, to help Fillmore, to help the council on the phone call away.
When you set, why are, if we set up a solar farm, when you guys.
Why, if we have programs or we have interconnected, you know, we would do the interconnections. You know, I will say that on the PEB previous, you know, to the conversation, I'm going to provide you with some information because I know that Edison has been very engaged with plug-in electric vehicle programs and we've also had, uh, some assistance to cities, so I'll be providing you some information via email tomorrow.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
So you want that?
Yeah, we have to vote on the resolution. Yes, I am supporting the resolution.
Mayor, Edison is, is supportive of distributed generation, it's what builds a staple, reliable grid. And, uh, there are state mandates that require utilities to purchase, um, marching towards thirty percent of their, uh, demand out of renewable forecasts and Edison is well ahead of the curve in meeting that demand. Currently takes four acres of land mass to produce one megawatt with photovoltaic cells. So that's the equation, land mass to one megawatt, um, solar site. You know, as far as a purchasing generation agreement, PGA agreement, Edison purchases power from individual generators as small as a quarter megawatt or smaller from small rooftop, uh, systems that are installed on businesses. That said, was being presented for us tonight, in theory, I would support it as long as the regulatory issues have been ironed out. I'm reluctant to support it carte blanche with the inequities that are in the bill currently. Uh, last thing we want to do is shift rates from people not participating in this program, or from people participating in this program, over to utility served customers. And that's a, a key concern and, um.
Well, thanks for sharing, I just wanted, while you're on that topic, Steve, I appreciate you sharing that information with us, that's important. But, uh, that was one of the items that the Davis mayor told me was that has been resolved.
And I, I.
In the current legislation.
I'd like to see the current legislation before us, so for that reason, I, I'll not be supporting this at the current format.
I would think you would have to abstain from voting, eh?
No.
Because you're an employee of Edison and officially are taken off.
This has nothing, this, this has nothing to do with Edison, this is a private aggregate, uh, generation company, so that's nothing to do with us.
I mean, it doesn't matter that much to me, I'm just saying Edison just came here with some official. It, it, it's nothing worth.
Yeah.
And it just occurred to me.
We don't need to go there, yes, it's, I mean, I'm not saying you're sorry at all. Some people would maybe issue that, we choose not to. Any other questions?
Well, I have a question, I have a statement, I, I, I don't like it, the way that I read it. I think that, um, for example, if you have your house in solar, you know, Edison will only purchase thirty percent. They use a whole, whatever is left, they're only paying thirty percent, it might just, I mean, the industry in general. I think if we have the big holes that needs to be fixed, I am not against solar, I want that. I want to wear solar on everything, but there's a lot of big holes and I don't think this dis，则 personally, uh, does create what we need and the environment we need, actually actually creates a lot more problems. And I don't know if Fillmore would want to be in the middle of that, so I can't support it as well.
Okay, but I will say, I think it's pretty benign the way it's, the resolution's written and all it does is, is give, um, people the ability to buy into a co-op. And, um, well, as an example, I know when I first started thinking about the solar out on the, on the Texaco site, um, I did reach out to Edison and some third-party investors and at the time, the, the max twenty percent had already been achieved and only this year, the thirty percent came in of renewable energy and at the time, there really wasn't any demand by Edison to, to do that. Um, and I talked to, um, an investor, a third-party investor who, and that's why they couldn't participate because they didn't think anybody would buy it, that Edison would buy it. Now I think they would with the thirty percent. And, and this just gives the, um, the, the public the ability to buy into a co-op. And it's, and the language, everybody, when I talked to the mayor of Davis this morning, he said that everybody seems to be happy, PG and E is happy with it up there with the new language, so. I mean, I am supporting it, so, I'm done talking.
I, I too will be supporting, um, this, this supposed bill. I do believe that as Sacramento works, there will be numerous amendments to it. Um, I'm looking forward to hopefully getting briefed on those so we have an idea of where it's at. Um, the concerns that were brought up by Steve and, uh, Mayor Washington and Edward are, no, they're credible. One thing I will say is I do believe the consumer should have a right to choose. And if they want to join a co-op, then that should be their ability to do so. We should not infringe on that and, so, I, I will be doing some more research. I know we have to make a decision this evening, um, but yes, I'll be supporting this.
Okay, is that, do you want to put in a motion?
I was ready. Alright, I move to approve the resolution number three three four three. Resolution, City Council of the City of Fillmore supporting SB eight forty-three, the Community-Based Renewable Energy Self-Generation Act, a bill related to local renewable energy production.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Okay, motion passes through too. Thank you. Alright, um, city council member travel request, brief report, I think we already did that. Uh, I don't see any, uh, items for placement on future agenda.
I have, I have got one.
Uh, let me, let me stop for a second and I'll get back to you in a little while. We have a, a successor agency formerly known as the RDA Agenda and, uh, we have a warrant list, that's item four A on the agenda.
Move to approve warrant list for July tenth, two thousand and one. So move.
I have a motion and a second, this is a voice vote, Councilman Conway?
Aye.
Aye, alright.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Alright, back to Ed Warner, you have an agenda item?
Yeah, I have three items, uh, one is I want to put on the agenda, the shopping carts and through the city of Fillmore.
Okay.
Uh, number two, um, I think it was February, we were waiting for an independent report with regards to the business park. To this day, we haven't, I haven't heard anything about it, so I would like to know, we're standing on that and hopefully we can have the report by then. And I also would like to have in a closed session, a look into the P A's case with no attorneys. Or no need to question attorneys, ultimately, so.
Okay.
I didn't, and, would you say the last one?
Sure. I would like to have, um, a review of the P A's case. And, um, and I'm not requesting for attorneys to. And, um, and I'm not requesting for attorneys to come over here, just to get an update of what's going on.
Yeah, we're supposed to be getting a monthly update anyway, so, I think it's time. So, I'm in support of all those items on the future agenda.
So, with the shopping carts, you wanna look at the problem of lots of shopping carts being left around the town and possible solutions with vendors and maybe volunteer organizations?
I'm looking to discuss the problem, and I'm looking to see if we can find a way to resolve the problem of shopping carts everywhere, not shopping carts everywhere.
So, we're not asking the city staff to solve it. I just wanted to clarify that, okay?
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you for that.
So, I, I, I'm in support of all three. Uh, do we have another person in support of all three?
I agree.
Okay. So, that sounds great. Any other, uh, agenda items?
Yes. I would like, uh, for a future agenda item, doesn't have to be, um, come back from, um, our break, but I would like to have a discussion, um, with my fellow council members in respect to a goal-setting session. And, um, number two item that I would like, um, this mostly goes to the city staff, um, for Channel 10. Um, the walking, walking trail and bike trail on the levee, um, is prone to mini animals and reptiles. There was an encounter, um, that I had, there was a baby rattler on the trail coming from the riverbed, probably going to the, to the hot pavement to, um, something. I just wanted to be known that, um, be careful, because these rattlers are out there, and, um, sometimes when you're, when you're walking the distance, it looks like a twig, and when you get closer, it's right there and they can jump.
So, you, you just want an announcement on Channel 10? This doesn't need to be a nine-month-
Well, the other, well, the, the other portion to it is, um, maybe down the road, we would wanna look into installing a few signs out there, especially during summer months, spring and summer months about, um, you know, being in the dark. Just have a-
I'll, I'll-
Graffiti, babe.
I'll second that idea. You put in the agenda.
Alright. So, any other agenda items? Okay. So, we're gonna move on to, um, oh, we're gonna move to our closed session, and we have, uh, three items, A, B, and C. I'm gonna employ performance evaluation, I'm gonna employ appointment, and conference with legal counsel on State Board of Individualization case 468869.
Mayor, if we could move the, the last one up front, so Steve can-
Okay, so, we're gonna change item C to be item A. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on these items before we go into closed session? Did we anticipate any announcements? I don't think so. No. Okay. Well, thank you, and the, um, the next scheduled council meeting is August 28th, we have a long break ahead of us, but I think we're gonna be here anyway, and some other issues. You guys have some questions with us. Thank you. Good night.